Good evening and welcome to the February 4th, 2025, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are meeting this evening in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. It's, it's, it's his loss. So I'm going to ask you to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me, okay? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof. That I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution and laws of said state. Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the City Council of the City of Greensboro. So help me God. Congratulations and welcome to the City of Greensboro. Jamila, you really have quite a cheering section here today. Would you, would you like to mention who was up with you at the swearing in?
My mother. My mother, Vicki Flippen, right there.
Wonderful. Now, everybody is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But I imagine you were here to, to really just celebrate Jamila's swearing in. So if you want to leave, please do so quietly. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Mrs. Thur, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City Council encourages resident input. Public participation is of the utmost importance to the City Council. It is the goal of the City Council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming space and that residents feel empowered to bring issues of concerns before their elected officials. Individuals may sign up to speak on specific agenda items. The subject will be noted and if it requires any action or a request, the city clerk or the city manager will provide steps for after action. The order in which speakers are called is at the discretion of the mayor or the presiding officer. Speakers must be signed up to speak by 6:00 PM and will be allotted three minutes each. Speakers may not relinquish any remaining time to another speaker and may speak once during the public comment period. Speakers shall be civil and courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language or gestures or other inappropriate behaviors are not allowed. Speakers are to address council during the public comment period. Public comment is an opportunity for council to hear from residents. It is the intention of council to hear from residents during this time. A resident may speak only if they have signed up to speak in according with the city's outlined procedures. Any handouts should have been provided to the city clerk or the courier for distribution to council. The City of Greensboro is committed to promoting an environment that is free of discrimination, bias, and bullying. Therefore, speakers shall refrain from personal attacks. The mayor or presiding officer has the authority to interpret and enforce the law, enforce the laws of decorum in order to maintain a safe space for all speakers. Members of the audience or speakers from the podium who intentionally disrupt the meeting, engage in egregious or repeated violations, or ridicule other speakers will be given a warning and if unheeded, they will be removed from the meeting. That person will be suspended from in-person participation for three months. In order to preserve their right to free speech, they can attend virtually by Zoom or submit comments by email. In the event of a physical altercation, that person will be removed from council chambers for one year with the ability to, to participate via Zoom or email. All electronic devices should be turned off or to the silent mode. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the chamber. Zoom participants shall mute their microphones until they are called upon to speak. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they sit on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city. All votes will be moved and seconded and the mayor will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda for items G1 through G8, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what are believed to be routine and non-controversial items. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the February 18th City Council Business Meeting. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. We do need a nomination for Chair for the Civil Service Board. And I know that the city clerk sent us a, an email. Do we have a motion for the Chair?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, Madam Mayor. Mr. George Ingram, who is currently on the board, and I think we, as council, appointed him as well. But he's been very engaged in this process and has led this group very well. They've selected their fifth member, as you know, and so I think they're ready to begin work.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Holston. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Mrs. Holden? Okay, that passes to zero. There are no ceremonial or presentation items on this agenda. We do have our public comment portion. And this is where speakers have up to three minutes to discuss an item that is important to them. Our first speaker is on Zoom, Mary Owens. Madam Clerk, is she on Zoom? No? Okay, our first three speakers are Blair Cole, Cameron Dixon, and Taylor Simmons Parsons. If you would remove, if you would move to the window side of the chamber.
Good evening. My name's Blair Cole. I live at 1812 Marion Street, and I come to you to speak about G1, the proposal to eliminate the spacing requirements for short-term rentals.
Just for the record, you're not actually speaking on that item.
I understand that. I'm encouraging you not, I understand that it's limited.
Please allow me to speak.
I'm sorry.
I am clarifying it for the record that the item on the consent agenda is to call a public hearing. You are speaking from the floor on a different issue.
I'm asking the council not to call that public hearing to shortcut the process and not make it available.
Then you can wait and you'll have to come up and speak at that item.
Thank you.
We will. Cameron Dixon? It's a wire that keeps. Sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Mayor's, members of the City Council, staff, members, and members of the public. My name is Cameron Dixon, and I am a first-year junior liberal studies pre-law student at the illustrious North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University here in Greensboro. I am from Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina, which is a small town in Halifax County. First, I would like to express my thanks to you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I stand here as a part of this thriving, caring community, which is known for its dedication to justice, progress, and growth. However, crime in Greensboro is a growing issue that needs our combined attention. According to the FBI, violent crimes are defined as murder, rape, robbery, or aggravated assault. On the other hand, property crimes consist of arson, burglary, larceny, theft, and motor vehicle theft. The article "The Top Ten Most Dangerous Cities in NC" in 2024 by Joel Manasala utilizes a specific criteria for the rankings of each city. He looks at the crime rate, violent crime rate, property crime rate, population size, and socioeconomic factors. According to Manasala's discoveries, Greensboro ranks eight out of 10 for the most dangerous cities in North Carolina. He writes that Greensboro, one of North Carolina's largest cities, has a property crime rate of 3,374 per 100,000 residents. The city also has a violent crime issue, although property crime is more prevalent. Police Chief John Thompson recognized that the rates of domestic violence, which is categorized as a violent crime, increased by 40% in 2024 alone. And we already have heard from Fox 8 News that Greensboro has already addressed six homicides in just two weeks into 2025. Although there was a drop in the homicides from '74 to 2023 and '23 and 2024, which is 20% below the average rate, it's a pattern. This pattern requires our immediate attention, action, and response. The results of crime permeate our streets, homes, colleges, and universities today. Proverbs 22 and 6 says, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." I believe that the first step begins with our youth because they are our future. I have noticed that the youth are afraid of our first responders, specifically our police, due to events that have occurred with police brutality. As a result of this fear, they lack respect for our first responders and the laws that are in place to protect the community. Quarterly or annually, city, city events for the youth of Greensboro where our first responders participate will minimize crime from the youth who will be our adults in the future. This event can be as simple as an annual barbecue in the city, many career fairs.
Want to finish your sentence?
Yes. At local schools or quarterly sporting events in the community. Fear causes rebellion, and if we can minimize fear, we can minimize crime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I do want to let you know that the police chief has two, two public sessions. One will be February 6th at the Leonard Community Center at 6:30. And then the next one will be February 11th at 6:30 at Presbyterian Church of the Cross. That is in addition to two that he has had previous. I think your, your comments are well received, and that might be a good opportunity for you to express some of your concerns. And then I think just for the viewing public, if you go back and look at our first meeting in January, the police chief and council had a very long, robust discussion about crime statistics and things that he might need and what we can do as a community to help address that. Thank you. After Taylor Simmons Parsons, we have Juan Carlos Merga and Brian Leonard.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Taylor Simmons Parsons, and I am a senior bioengineering student at North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University.
Excuse me, can you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, thank you. Is that better? Oh, oh, thank you. Is that better? Good afternoon, council members. My name is Taylor Simmons Parsons, and I am a senior bioengineering student at North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University. I would like to first and foremost thank you for the opportunity to speak today about an issue that deeply impacts my peers and myself. While I do not come before you with a formal request, I ask for your attention on a pressing matter. It is essential that young adults, particularly those from underrepresented backgrounds, have equal access to education, career opportunities, and leadership roles. Diversity has shaped my entire life. As a Black woman in STEM, I'm often one of the only people who look like me in a room. It hasn't always been easy, but it has taught me that people should be judged by their contributions and not their background. Unfortunately, recent federal policies threaten the, threaten to undo decades of progress and equal access to opportunity. Since January 20th, executive orders have rolled back diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, better known as DEI programs, and threaten the Equal Opportunity Employment Act. These changes will make it harder for students like me and future graduates to access internships, scholarships, and fair hiring opportunities. According to the National Science Foundation, Black professionals make up only 9% of the STEM workforce, despite being nearly 14% of the US population. Without programs like these, these disparities will only continue to grow. I urge this council to recognize the ripple effect these policies will have on our city's workforce, economy, and leadership roles. Young adults are the backbone of innovation and progress. We are entering an already competitive job market without equitable access to education, employment, and future leadership opportunities. We risk losing the diverse talent that drives our community forward. While we may not be able to change federal decisions, we can strengthen local DEI efforts through city workforce programs, internships, and scholarships. We can affirm the city's commitment to fair employment practices and ensure that all residents, regardless of background, have an equal shot at success. I thank you for your time, and I hope you consider young professionals like me as you shape policies for the future, for the future of our city. Thank you so much.
I just, I just want you to know, young lady, young lady. I just want you to know, thank you very much for coming. But one of our principles here is equity. So we do focus on just what you're talking about and a little troubling, but we're gonna keep moving ahead, so.
I truly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
And I'd like to say that I am very impressed with the A&amp;T students that are getting involved in what's happening because you live here for four years.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're taking an active part in trying to make some changes and make the city better. And we, we endeavor to do the same. Thank you for coming and for having a voice.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Carlos Merga. Can you see there? I'm a new resident of Greensboro, and I'm very excited to be living here. Came from California and it's a beautiful city and a beautiful state. I'm here to, to discuss an initiative that I started many years ago. And my, my goal is to present it to the City Council and, and the mayor and the people of Greensboro. It's called Project M. I'm here to bring attention to a pressing issue in our community. The lack of dedicated initiatives to address organic and food waste collection. As you may know, organic waste that reaches our landfills generates methane gas, a harmful greenhouse that significantly contributes to climate change. With the impacts of rising temperatures already affecting our planet, it is crucial for us to take proactive measures as a community in cooperation with other cities to mitigate these effects for the benefit of human sustainability. Animals, planet Earth, and as an example to future generations of a unified commitment to positive change. To address this issue, I have developed an initiative called Zero M, designed to control organic waste at its, at its source and prevent it from reaching the landfill. Zero M proposes an effective method of transforming organic waste into a hydrated material through a process of heating and rotation at varying temperatures at the source. This process eliminates harmful organisms while preserving beneficial ones, resulting in a product that can be safely and effectively used as compost. Currently, many businesses and homeowners face significant challenges in properly handling and disposing of organic waste. Existing systems are often difficult to navigate, measure, or control, which discourage proper waste management. As our community continues to grow, these challenges will only intensify, leading to increased waste and higher costs to waste management solutions in the future. By implementing an initiative like Zero M, our community can reduce the volume of organic waste reaching our landfills, lower methane emissions and their contribution to climate change, encourage sustainable waste management practices among residents and businesses, create valuable compost products that can support local agriculture and gardening effects. I urge the City Council to prioritize the issue of organic organic waste.
Thank you. Thank you. You can always give your comments to the courier. We can get them emailed if you want.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Mr. Leonard, we have Brenda Barksdale, Scott Jones, and Malik Hugh. Those are the only people I have signed up as a speaker from the floor. If we've, if we've missed you, please check with the courier. I see maybe more came since I got this list. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Brian Leonard. I am the, I live at 102 South Minnenhall. I am the Chair of the Board of Bicycling in Greensboro, the current acting chair, and would like to read a letter from our advocacy committee of appreciation for the, for the council's actions on, on, on this, this topic. So, "On behalf of members of Bicycling in Greensboro Advocacy Committee, we are writing to express our sincere appreciation for the recently implemented improvements to Greensboro's leaf waste collection procedures. There has been a significant positive impact for local bicyclists, and we commend the councils, we commend the council for the decisions that led to these changes. The reduction in the amount of leaves accumulating on the city streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes has made a noticeable positive difference for safety. Leaves, especially when wet, can create hazardous slippery surfaces. They obscure road markings, holes, and other hazards that contribute to dangerous riding conditions. The improved leaf collection efforts have reduced these risks, making our seat, making our streets safer for all bicyclists, from commuters to recreational riders. We believe that the current leaf waste management procedures demonstrate the city's commitment to creating a more bike-friendly community. We look forward to continuing the work, to work with the City Council on future initiatives that promote bicycling safety and accessibility in Greensboro. Thank you all."
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Brenda Barksdale?
Good evening, Mayor and councilman. I am Brenda Artis Barksdale and and I live at 308 Urban Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. My concern is the Renham Road Carter. And on April the 30th, ABC News contacted me, asked me if I would do an interview for the Renham Road traffic and the dangerous parts of Renham Road. Well, I did call the city after they called the city and said we did not meet the criteria to have left turn, traffic lights at Metta View and Renham Road. And Metta View mean Renham Road and Florida Street. So I got the report and Mr. David Arte gave it and said this report was done between 2019 and 2020. So we need an update because Renham Road is dangerous, heavy traffic, and five people has been killed there. And like Ms. Hightower said back in August, on August the 20th, the City Council meeting, you know, we have been asking for these traffic lights for years. We thank you. And you know, something needs to be done. If you don't soon get some traffic lights, there's gonna be more incidents, accidents there and people killed at Metta View and Renham Road. That's all we asking to do. And clean up those parking lots at some of them, what do I want to say, some of them stores on Renham Road. So you know, Renham Road Carter, and we appreciate it. So don't go from I-40 all the way back to the city limit. But we need you to do something about Renham Road, the whole part of Renham Road. And we are citizens and we are very concerned about our safety and the traffic there. And like I say, we need an update study for Renham Road. I appreciate what y'all have done and thank you so much. And congratulations to Ms. Pender, the Yawa Piter for the City Council Chair. God bless and have a good evening. Thank you.
So, Mr. City Manager, can we get that study done because it has been a while? For Ms. Barksdale, been asking for these, I know, over 12 years. So that left turn signals at those intersections are critically important. People have run the red light. Still want my red light cameras? They've been killed at Renham and Metta View as well. So I'd like for us to go back and revisit. Really should have been part of our Renham Road corridor plan, which I don't really think is complete the way it should be. So I really would like for us to go and do that post ACE.
I think there's two things there. As I listened to her, it sounds like she has some contact with someone in transportation. So I'll follow up on what, what the results of that submission were. But then also, I think the, the separate issue is the red light cameras. I think Deputy Manager Wilson will have an update regarding the red light camera progress in the coming weeks.
Well, there may be a contact, but sometime it takes the manager to move things, so I'm asking you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Good evening. Good evening, council members and residents of Greensboro City. Tiny House Community Development is preparing to celebrate 10 years as a nonprofit, 11 years since we started at the IRC. One of the things we've worked really hard to do is try to raise money and develop tiny house communities for people that are experiencing homelessness and poverty, particularly veterans. Right now, we have 12 houses under construction in High Point in Greensboro. We have 16 completed one-bedroom tiny houses that have been occupied anywhere from three to seven years. I'm coming to council tonight because I've proposing, and I've given you all drawings of a proposal for our Freeman Mill Road property that was donated to us by by the Ray family back in 2019. We currently have three structures that we are, will have done in the next two months and occupied by veterans on Freeman Mill Road. This property has been designed, the site plan, by students and interns at UNCG and A&amp;T. So, what you have before you are actual design concepts from college students who are investing their time and their money here in Greensboro to make it a better place to live. This proposal is for, would be for two and three-bedroom houses with one-bedroom and studio ADUs behind each house. That is the preliminary plan as it is right now under the current zoning, which is RM5 residence, or RS5, I'm sorry. So, we don't need rezoning. I'm just bringing this to council to let council know that this is the plan for this site, to develop it into residential housing, single-family lots. Another proposal that we had early on that was dismissed by some council, and I won't say any names because it was brought to us, was a proposal to build a 28,000-square-foot human service campus on that site that would also serve as an emergency shelter for natural disasters. It would have showers, laundry, educational classrooms, commercial kitchen and dining hall, a nurse on staff, and 20,000-square-foot of manufacturing of tiny homes to be built in or around the city of Greensboro and Guilford County. We know this, that, we already know there's over 35,000 houses. You guys have already said it, 35,000 houses by 2029. Right here, six acres that was donated to us that we can get started building any day. I hope that I can get support from the council and the residents in the Glenwood neighborhood, which we've already met with, to build these houses as supportive housing for individuals experiencing poverty and homelessness here in Greensboro. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. After Malik, we have Genesis Holland, Shandrika Malone, Diva Malone, and King Malone. And those are our final speakers from the floor on non-agenda items. If I've called your name, please come to the window side of the chamber.
Hey, city council. And I came against, as you'll see on the screen above you, in front of you. I came with this project. I have been started helping my homeless community out here feeding them, out here giving them food and stuff. So, I'mma show y'all. This is where I took my homeless. I have 50 biscuits and orange juices. I took them out there and I showed my homeless. And I gave them all of that. And I just wanted y'all to know that this is what I've been doing for the time being to help out. One day, I just said, God just woke me up and just said, "Go out there and feed your people that need you. They need help with food, clothes, they need hair, they need stuff done." So, I'mma also go back onto that too. But, so, like I said, I've been feeding them macaroni and cheese, fried chicken, green beans, and all that, and rice. So, I just like said, "I'm just gonna feed them." And then I had a lot of other ideas that I wanted to help, bring ideas to my community so that way we can help more people. As y'all see, that I'm trying to build my community back up. I'm trying to get housing. I'm trying to get more stable spots for people to sleep, people to be able to be in. And I just want my city to come and help me. I want my city council members to come out, come out there and be a part of my team. Come out there, help. Who hosting? You did it. You came out there at some of the events that I've been to. Zack, you came out there too. I want to see more y'all. Nancy Vaughn, you done too. Even Abu Zawed, you done came out there too. I want to see a lot more y'all. I want to see this to make change so that way my city can just see what's coming. Because this, I brought this future from California to Greensboro. Because another lady over there in California had brought me the idea, and I just took the idea and just made it to Greensboro. And I just said, "Let me just change up. Take a little bit of ideas from California to make it out here." I want y'all to see there's change that's coming. There's properties, there's places, there's houses. I'm even trying to get me a church coming soon that's going to be housed for the unsheltered community. And I just want the city to help me out. Be there by my side. Support. Show love. Show what we can out here. Because there's a lot of people that's out here. It's a lot of my members. I even talk to a lot of them each and every day. I get out here and see what's going on. I've been out here since 2017, and I got hurt downtown Greensboro at Center City Park. I got beat up to it. I was in the hospital from 10:00 in the morning to 5:00 o'clock in the evening. I was in the hospital all day. I want to stop some of this crime out here on the streets. I want to stop some of my homeless members from getting beat up. I just want to see a lot of changes. I want to see more people locked up behind bars for beating people like me because I'm special needs. I'm out here different than all these other people. For me, I stick to my own self. I don't bother nobody. Many people out here, you can even ask many of my peoples, many of my friends, you can ask them. I don't bother nobody too much. I stick to my own grounds and I follow my own moves. So, I'm just asking for city council to just please, just help me make this as a big nonprofit organization so that way I can get all my stuff done. I would love for city council to help pitch in sometime. Come out there. Come out and help. Who hosting? All of y'all. All of y'all. Who, I know you, me and you been in collabs for a minute. Zack, me and you are in collabs. I want to nominate y'all because y'all been good. Y'all are top. Y'all my top ones. I want to thank y'all so much for being there. Abu Zawed, you too. You done vaded to the top. You at the top of the iceberg of it all. So, I want to thank you because I done seen you a lot. Sharon, I done seen you all the time. I just want to say thank you to you. Because you been out there, you doing so much on the grounds, trying to get everything. And I just want to say this. I love you and we love all of y'all. We just want to see more y'all out here. We want to see more city council members to come out, draw out. I want to see it. Go to Wales, you. I want to see you. Thank y'all.
Hi, my name is Genesis Holland. I'm a freshman at North Carolina A&amp;T. As a North Carolina native with family in the area, I have grown to see the explanation of our city of Greensboro and the vast opportunities presented before its residents. However, this growth has only amplified the poor handling of our less fortunate citizens. The homeless population of Greensboro has been almost entirely ignored. In 2024, we saw a growth in the homeless population by 42%. The city's poverty rate is 31% higher than the national average, yet we only see aid provided during the winter months at a middle school scale, where private organizations and students like myself are picking up some of the failures of our council. Greensboro reportedly spends $10 million a year on housing the homeless population through nonprofit funding and hotels, yet has only seen worsening states of poverty. One could argue that this is a result of the mishandling of that money. The average cost of living is $1,200 a year, meaning the city could rent with $5.4 million and still have remaining funds. The pure ignorance to this rising issue is evident of how the homeless are considered subhuman. The amount we amass in funding could be put towards the more familiar idea of sheltering, which hasn't been implemented. Citizens are suffering for being unhoused, which is why the residency in, in has not housed anyone because of the amassed pricing, which is around two, sorry, $200K to house all the homeless citizens in Greensboro. This prompts a question. Why hasn't our city targeted this issue in the easiest way with sheltering? And that I'll leave you all to answer.
I just want to say justice to Laquan Little and my family.
Good evening, everyone. This is Shandrika Malone. I am here on the behalf of my family, the Little's family. I just want to speak on the behalf of my family. Due to Greensboro Police Department, okay, sorry. Due to Greensboro Police Department refusing to search the pond, my family has faced a traumatic, major impact in our family. We would like apology from Greensboro Police Department due to them refusing to do what my cousin Tamika asked was just to search the pond. Laquan Little was the one who got killed. Well, he didn't get killed. We don't know exactly what happened. But from my understanding, my cousin asked several times on several occasions for that pond to be searched at Blueford Parkway where her son was found missing at. She did have his location pinged at that particular place. And the detective that was on that case said he used a drum and based off of his investigation, you guys assumed that his body was not in the pond. My cousin had to hire a private, a private company, a nonprofit organization to actually do you guys this job. And the Littlest thing that y'all could have did was just apologize because everything that she told y'all was correct. She told y'all that he was, he was at the pond. He told y'all, she told y'all that, that his location pinged at that pond. And I feel like you guys just felt us as a community, not only as a community with the unhoused, but now this is personal because this is my family. So, I'm not gonna come the same way I came with the unhoused. I'm coming way harder because this is my family. So, what I would like for you, Nancy Vaughn, is to do more investigation on why that pond was not searched when my cousin asked you guys on numerous occasions to search the pond. You guys said it was only three feet, it was only four feet. Everything that you guys said turned out to be a lie. So, what I want is justice for my family because this is unacceptable. Not only is it unacceptable for my cousin, but it's only unacceptable for any other family that's dealing with a traumatic situation where they're asking for help. I thought y'all job was to serve and protect. That wasn't done. But when that officer got killed, you guys make sure that you guys did what y'all need to do. So, I need y'all to have the same energy, the same type of process that y'all did with the officer that got killed. I need y'all to move as quick as with my family because this is not right. This is unacceptable and I am angry.
Dear, dear members of the North Carolina Overnight Committee, I'm writing to bring your attention-
Can you give us your name?
Diva. Okay. Dear members of the North Carolina Oversight Committee, I am writing to bring to your attention the deeply concerning mishandling of the disappearance and death of Laquan Little by Greensboro Police Department. This case underscores significant failures and integrity, and it raises critical questions about systematic bias in law enforcement practices. Laquan Little disappeared on December 31st, and from the outset, his mother repeatedly pleaded with the Greensboro Police Department to thoroughly investigate his disappearance. She specifically requested that the nearby pond be searched suspecting it is, it could hold critical clues. Her consult, her concerns, however, were dismissed by the department who insisted they had searched the area using a personal drone. Yet, no evidence of such a search has been provided. Disturbingly, two weeks later, Laquan's body and his vehicle were discovered and discovered in the very pond that his mother had implored the police to search. There was many questions asked. Why did the GPD fail to act on the mother's urgent and reasonable request to search the pond? What efforts, if any, were undertaken to locate Laquan, Laquan in the critical days following his disappearance? And why has the GPD been unable to produce any proof such as video footage, logs, or reports? Adding to these concerns, the GPD neglected to verify whether Laquan's vehicle had exited, exited, sorry, the area through the gate. Despite having access to controversial, yet widely-used Flock safety cameras, which would, which could have easily identified his car's license placed and tracked its movements, the department failed to utilize this resource. Flock safety cameras are a subject of public controversy for their potential on civil liberties, but their documented use by GPD shows they rely on this technology regularly. Proof of their consistent use is available in the public usage reports, which can be accessed at transparency.com. This raises the questions of why the department chose not to use a tool that could have expanded their investigation and potentially provide closure to Laquan's family sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of the speakers we had on non-agenda items. We will now move on to our consent agenda. We do have a speaker on item G1. G1 is a resolution calling a public hearing for February 18th, 2025, to amend the land development ordinance related to short-term rentals. Blair Colb? Okay, I guess he's not here. So, do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Dr. Wells.
Councilmember Matheny? I know, I'm sorry. I marked you absent at the beginning of the meeting and will correct that problem. Could I have a voice vote from you though?
And that passes nine to zero. Now move on to our public hearing agenda. We have one, which is item H1. It is a resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the financing of various capital projects for the city of Greensboro, North Carolina, and requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement. I have to read the following information. This is the hour and day of the public hearing on a trust agreement or similar installment financing agreement, arrangement, called the arrangement, to be entered into by the city of Greensboro, North Carolina, the city pursuant to Sections 160A-20 of the General Statutes of North Carolina as amended, providing for the issuance of limited obligation bonds, the bonds, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $26 million for the purpose of providing funds, together with other available funds, to A, pay the costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a new fire station; B, demolishing the city existing Belmead parking deck; C, acquiring land for future city use or for economic development purposes; and D, acquiring, installing, and maintaining radio communications equipment for various city departments, collectively called the project; and B, pay certain financing costs related thereto. If the city enters into the proposed agreement, it will secure its obligations thereunder by A, granting a lien on all or a portion of the sites where the project will be located, together with all the improvements or fixtures located or to be located therein; and B, granting a security interest in all or a portion of the project consisting, um, consisting personal property. The city clerk is further, the city clerk is directed to attach the affidavit of the publication of notice of public hearing to the proceedings. We do not have any speakers on this item. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abu Zawed.
She did it on the screen. It's okay.
Doing voice. Yeah. So, moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Dr. Wells. Council, please vote. vote. And that passes nine to zero. We now move on to the general business portion of our agenda. We have two items. The first is I1, a resolution to authorize a contract in the amount of $2,720,034 with Haskell Company as the construction manager at Risk C Mar for the Mitchell wastewater residuals and emerging contaminants improvements. Move the item. We, we do have one speaker. I don't know if they're here to answer questions or if And you have three minutes.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Devon Danielle Webb, and I am a junior animal science major at North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University. I am here today to address a critical issue affecting the health of every person in this room and in the city. PFAS. PFAS, more colloquially referred to as forever chemicals, stands for polyfluoroalkyl substances, substances found in our everyday products and our drinking water. PFAS are substances that do not break down naturally and have been linked to serious health problems ranging from kidney and liver damage to cancer amongst other major health concerns. PFAS have not only been found in our drinking water, but have also been found in products such as non-stick frying pans and firefighting foams. The firefighting foams, such as Aquias Film Forming Foam or AFFFs, that have been and remain commonly used in the Greensboro Airport industrial area to this day. With this being said, I am grateful for the work of the City Council in cooperation with the Haskell Company, selected for the Mitchell Water Treatment Plant Residuals and Emerging Contaminants Improvements, which will be instrumental in removing PFAS from Greensboro drinking water. Bearing in mind the necessity of this job, seeing that as of spring 2023, Greensboro's drinking water contained 27 parts per trillion of PFAS, superseding the EPA standard of four parts per trillion. Although these numbers are concerning, I am grateful that we are taking important steps to address this, giving thanks to the Water Resources Department, which has committed $75 million to upgrade water treatment systems to remove 97% of PFAS, bringing Greensboro into compliance with federal standards. As this is happening, I urge the council to consider, to continue considering the health and safety of our citizens in every decision we make moving forward, reminding you all that we must also focus on preventing future contamination, primarily by utilizing safer fluorine-free firefighting foams and similar alternatives to stop PFAS from being released into our environment. I want to thank the many groups working tirelessly on this issue, including our water resources staff, the EPA, the Haskell Company, and all organizations pushing for accountability from chemical manufacturers. While we are making strides, we need to stay committed to both treating and preventing further contamination, and we cannot allow the taxpayers to bear the full cost of cleaning up the mess that is created by industries that continue to use harmful chemicals. Being that the vision plan for Greensboro is to be a community with a high quality of life and many economic opportunities, I earnestly urge you all to keep in mind the quality of life that every one of our 304,279 citizens so rightly deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for recognizing the good work of the Water Resources Department because they have really been at the forefront of this for many years. You did mention firefighting foam. At this point, there is not a good alternative, and that foam really needs to be used at the airport in the event of a jet disaster and for the tank farm. So unfortunately, until there is a good alternative to that foam, we're forced to use it. But I will tell you that fire departments across the country are asking for the same thing, and that is for a new alternative. So hopefully manufacturers will step up and be able to provide us with something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on that item?
I think I moved.
I did move it.
You moved it?
Yes.
Who was the second?
Second.
It just didn't pop up on my screen.
Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. And our last item is I.2, a resolution authorizing a change order to contract 2023-015A with Samet Corporation for Police Headquarters Renovations in the amount of $3,139,537. Moved by Mr. Matheny, seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a brief comment on this item, and so I voted for it.
Sure.
It did meet the goals in this one. I'd like to see the same company do the same thing with all our other projects. And right now Windsor Chavis is failing miserably. And I promised the community that we would have more inclusion and more opportunity, and that is not occurring. And so numbers that look this good can be achieved. That tells me they can be achieved with other projects. And it needs to happen because it's very disappointing right now with the Windsor Chavis project and some others.
Thank you. Any board and commission appointments? Ms. Pender, you probably don't have one tonight. Mrs. Thurm?
None for me.
Dr. Wells?
No, not tonight.
Okay.
No.
I do have one. I have appointed Tammy to the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Sharon has, I served on the board, Sharon served on the board. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson served on the board, and Tammy will take out the rest of that term. So if I can just get a, an acclamation on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
All in favor, say yes. All right. That passes nine to zero.
Tammy can go up and down the highway now.
Yeah.
Because that's what you do.
Mrs. Hoffman, do you have any boards, commission appointments?
No.
No? Mr. Matheny?
On the boards and commissions, I was looking through the, what we got in our folder today.
Mm-hmm.
I'm kind of disappointed in the lack of information on it. For example, the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is no term start, no term expires, and so I don't know what is going on. And then looking through it, there's just a lot of holes in this report. So it's kind of hard to follow.
This is just for attendance, for sure.
I get it. But I understand that. But there's a column that says term start, there's a column that says term expires, and some of them are populated, some of them are not. There's a lot of ones that are populated on term expires that they expired in '24. And so it's kind of hard for me to make an appointment if I can't follow exactly what's going on.
Ms. Matheny, there is another packet that has whether they resign, whether their term is over, and whether they could be reappointed. We got that.
Yes, ma'am. So Councilmember Matheny, the attendance reports come from the staff liaisons for those different boards and commissions, and we just did a training with them recently to try and help them to understand some of the things that, what their role consists of. So hopefully moving forward, that will be resolved. The other form that's in your packet, at the very top, is a report that my team created that tells you what appointments that you have open. Those are individually done for each council member, and then what other appointments you have made that are just standing appointments, just to kind of give you guys a brief overview of what you currently have going for each board and commission.
So you said that's in this folder today? All I've got is the attendance report.
If, if I may, if I may.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I've got, can I finish my comment, please? Here's the thing. I can only go on what I have in front of my face. And it seems to me, and I appreciate kind of, I've got five people telling me what to do, which is fun.
No, no.
But if I'm looking at this and I'm trying to determine the attendance of my appointees, inherited or not, the term limits, the term expirations, the start date, I'm looking at districts, it would seem to me that this should be populated and we shouldn't have two or three different forms.
Ma'am, I can get that information calibrated into one document for you.
That, that would be great, Ms. Lord.
Just one small comment. And I realize that the top one does not, but it looks like most all of the other ones are populated. With everything actually, except maybe those who have resigned or something. But I just wanted to point that out, that it did look like most of them were populated. So I understand too with the turnover in staffing and new things being tried that we, you know, not all of them may. I'm not sure who the liaison, the staff liaison is for that. But yeah, I agree with Zach. We need to make sure that all of those are populated.
Mr. Holston?
Forward motion.
Yeah. Mrs. Hightower?
No, nothing tonight. But, but I do want to address the boards and commissions issue because I'd like to see a boards and commission manager over them all, so it is a concise, comprehensive database. Because I too have to go to the, you gotta say, go to the website and look it up, or you get this form, which the writing is so little, in your packet the day of council, that you don't have time to process it. And I really would like to see that be better handled. And I think it can be to make things more efficient.
Thank you. Counsel comments? Ms. Pender? This is, this is the end of the meeting where we just have counsel comments on, and if you don't have any this meeting, I wouldn't expect you to. I do want to, I want you to say, we welcome you. We're happy that you're here. Thank you for this, for this first meeting. And you'll see, the, the counsel comment portion is, it's kind of a casual opportunity for council members to talk about where they've been the last two weeks, meetings they've gone to, concerns that they have, or to acknowledge job well done. So there's nothing specific about it. You can just say whatever, whatever you would like to. Excuse me? Yes, if there's. Mrs. Thurm?
I don't think I have any comments tonight, other than I'm looking forward to the retreat next week and to working with all of you all on setting some good strategic moves for the upcoming weeks, I believe, upcoming year. I believe for the residents, that is televised, correct? And you can follow along and watch us and see the work that we're going to be doing on the 12th and 13th of this month.
Yes. Thank you. Dr. Wells?
Well, I've enjoyed the, the black and white ball, which celebrated the city and started February 1st back in 1960. So saw a lot of people that you don't see every day, but to see the, one of the oldest members still there, it was great, just very great. But I am extremely pleased tonight to see these young ladies that have come. I don't know, who's the instructor? Is there an instructor? Well, I'm just glad that, it's a sorority. So I'm glad that the group is being civic-minded, civic-minded. And I represent District 2 where A and T is. So I'm, I'm your contact if you need something to, City Council.
So if you would like Dr. Wells to come to one of your sorority meetings, feel free to reach out to her or to reach out to any of us. We would always be pleased to come and talk to you about, you know, city civics.
Yeah. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Booze Waiter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention, it was the 25th anniversary of Club Fitness opening, and they had a celebration all day. That was Saturday, the 25th. And also that evening, Dr. Wells and I were at Lenny Williams, Mayor Lenny Williams' retirement. He is stepping down on his 91st birthday, is that correct?
91st.
And so shout out to Lenny if he ever sees this little clip. An amazing man. I've served with him on several boards, park board, PTRC, regional boards, and he's just an amazing person. So I wish him all the best. Certainly want to say, welcome, Jamila. We will all, as I think you can tell, will help you in whatever way you need. So just welcome and glad you were able to make your first meeting. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am looking for, looking forward to our two days of strategic planning last week. I had an opportunity to talk yesterday with the facilitator, and that was really, really very useful. I don't, City Manager Davis, I don't know whether that was, that was, that was your suggestion or hers, but I think it was a good idea. I'd also like to, to welcome Councilwoman Pender. I'm really looking forward to working with you. You know, I think that, that you bring a, a, a world of background and experience and, and community involvement that really is, is going to bring a point of view to council that, and that will be, be very useful. So I welcome you and look forward to working with you. Thanks very much, Mayor.
Mr. Matheny?
Mr. Manager, at our last meeting, not, or two meetings ago, we, I mentioned April 1st, and Malik coming up reminds me of, you know, April 1st, which somewhat arbitrary, but not really. I heard there was some planning going on. I've talked to some members of the, our partner organizations. Do we have a plan as of today?
Yes, sir, we do. And actually, we need to get that in front of you as a group. We are looking at potentially a work session or sometime possibly in small groups. There are a couple of different avenues that we're potentially looking at. One could be extending the time period that we are at the existing location with our pallet homes or an alternative location. Obviously, both of them will be somewhat of a, a funding lift. So again, those are some things that we have to get in front of you. I will tell you that one of the ideas that Assistant City Manager Harold and Director McNeil, Letitia McNeil, looked at was actually extending it out through the end of this, this calendar year. So again, there are a number of options that our folks are looking at, but we need to get them in front of you so you can help us look at the different options.
Calendar year or fiscal year?
The actual calendar year.
Okay. That's extensive. Speaking of work sessions, do we have any work sessions scheduled? And if so, what are the topics?
We do not have any work sessions scheduled as of yet. We've received multiple work session requests, which we're trying to make sure we prioritize as it relates to the things that we have. But that is going to be part of, and thank you, Councilwoman Thurm, for prompting the retreat. The work sessions and the way we communicate and coming together as a group is going to be a major topic that I'll be presenting to you all.
Well, I think this has been recommended by pretty much all of us. A housing work session is long overdue. I know we had some other meetings related to certain properties, but I still am baffled with the Summit Executive Center and the lack of activity and the lack of any information since we overpaid for that property. And so something on that corridor needs to be done sooner rather than later. And I think you could do a housing work session, which I think we would all support, and understanding where our dollars have gone from 2016, 2022, the funds we contributed to the community foundation. have gone from 2016, 2022, the funds we contributed to the community foundation, and the three major properties of Regency Inn, John Demery Way, and Summit, quite frankly, my recommendation would be that that's not, that that is an open meeting so that people can hear comments from council, comments from staff, and strategy on what we're gonna do, because we've held those properties a long time, John Demery Way, actually the longest, I think we're on our eighth year, so I would really appreciate that, and I know I'm not the only one. The other thing is, you know, again, you know, Malik's comments are good, and I don't know how we do this, the, well, one of the main things, when he's sitting there saying that he wants city council involved, and city staff and everything, the first thing that I think of is, does he go to the county that actually is supposed to manage Health and Human Services?
Think so.
Does anybody know?
I haven't seen him.
Yeah, I mean, some of this is education on, you know, there are meetings across that concrete on Thursday evenings that have open mic night, that actually handle Health and Human Services, but on that, and I know we do more as a city than most cities do in this realm of Health and Human Services, so understanding our limitations, there's a majority of us, if not all of us, that still want to help, and so when I see posts about haircuts, when I see posts about all the stuff that certain people are doing, there still needs to be some type of organization, so it's not just random acts of kindness. Random acts of kindness are fine, but when we see stuff that, that puts our staff in harm's way, potential harm's way, that's a problem, and so I just, you know, another church may come and down, we've already got a dozen churches, you know, how do we organize everybody so if we all want the same outcome, how can we work better together?
Well, and we do have two places where there should be
Under the Bridge.
Community meal distribution, and I think we need to reach out to those six churches and others and say, this is where they need to be, and put a little teeth in that.
Yeah, and that way there's not confusion for the people that are trying to get the help, or the food, or the haircut, which, you know, and I'm thinking from a downtown perspective, and especially when the spring comes around, you know, I know the ambassadors have been wanting to rent shower trucks, bathroom trucks, and other things to make initiatives, which I'm all, we'll do, but I'm also sitting here thinking, how do you just organize a little bit better so that we do it in the most appropriate manner, that the folks know where to go, but I'm also like, does any of our partner organizations do haircuts, or is it just random in the park? Huh?
Volunteers go to, I know they'll go to IRC and offer
Okay.
To do haircuts, yeah.
Well, I don't know if, we need to talk to Benita at IRC a little bit more and try to get information as we're talking to them, and maybe GOM and others, but anyway, that's, that's certainly on my mind, but really, it's, it's housing, 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 we've got the property, we've got the money, we're not moving the needle, so that's, that's, that's as calm as I can say it. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
So I, I want to kind of expand a little bit on what you said about like meal distribution, and I hope that people take advantage of the app, the Greater Guilford Food Finder, which was developed by the High Point Food Alliance, but they include the city of Greensboro as well, and there are a number of organizations that offer meals and food pantries on a regular basis, and I know that there are a number of churches that offer meals throughout the week, and they are extremely well-attended, so people will go where the services are offered. I would encourage if you know somebody who is food insecure, who is looking for food pantries, or looking for a hot meal, to download that app, it is called the Greater Guilford Food Finder, and you can find it on the App Store, and they do update it pretty regularly, so it's a, it's a great resource to share with people.
That's good information, the last two things I want to say is, I'm very impressed with you all, the speakers and the group that came here tonight from A and T, that was really, that's awesome, and Ms. Pender, welcome to this dubious crowd, I don't know why you wanted to do this, but I look forward to working with you.
And I believe there was a, I don't know if it was this sorority or another one who was at our last meeting, and listened to, I think it was the one where people talked about why they wanted to serve on city council, so we, we appreciate you coming out at that meeting also. Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I concur, Zach, with your comments about housing, 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 and we've said it before that housing, the situation here in our community is at a crisis level, and so therefore, we should respond accordingly, and do all we possibly can to ensure everything from the shelters to the permanent supportive housing, and going forward, so I look forward to those additional conversations, and setting goals and milestones, so that as we reach those portions, or we don't reach those portions, we know exactly where we are. I also say, congratulations, Councilmember Pender, congratulations on joining us, happy you're here, and looking forward to working with you. Also, just recently, last week, I participated in the, in the Guilford County Point in Time Count, and it was my first time actually going out into the field, and it's really eye-opening, if you haven't been, I encourage you, the next time there's an opportunity to go out and survey those who are unhoused, and generally that's done in the evenings, between 7:30 and midnight, meeting them where they are, whether it's under a bridge or in the woods, or wherever they may be, and having conversations with them, and again, it truly is eye-opening and does play even into the, into the housing number, I don't know what the number is right yet.
You didn't give the number?
Haven't heard the number yet, I will tell you that, that, that the number that, that we experienced, and in talking with most of the, of the surveyors, that we found that there was a lower, it felt lower than usual, not really sure why, if, if there were other opportunities, or if they relocated, or if there was some concern about meeting with us on that night, so we haven't determined it, don't know what the number is, but looking forward to getting that number, that annual number, but I also encourage you, next year, when that Point in Time Count happens, to please, please join us. Also want to share that I had the opportunity to join the North Carolina A and T Sit-In Breakfast this past Friday, it was another tremendous event, and I'll tell you that the choir at A and T is the absolute best. And then last but not least, let me share, and just some more details about the, those attendees here, these are members of the Alpha Phi Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority at North Carolina A and T, with some of their friends, and I, I know that they're, they're working on their civic engagement, and I don't think this is going to be your last time being here, so we definitely welcome you here, and happy to see you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Holston, I know you mentioned the Point in Time Count, and I'm surprised that you said it feel, felt lower, because it certainly appears like it's not lower, that there has been an influx of people over the last year, and really, the Point in Time Count, I don't think really reflects what the homelessness in our community really is, I, I think every year it's an undercount, and, which is a shame, because our funding is also based on that Point in Time Count, so we want it to be actual, we don't want it to be lower than it really is, but I think you're right, there might be some people who were afraid to be counted for a number of reasons this year, but, you know, whatever that number is, I wouldn't be comfortable with it, I think it's going to be artificially low, it basically is every year, we see what the need is on a daily basis, your organization, the Greensboro Housing Coalition, I'm sure your phones are ringing just as much as they always have.
Absolutely, you're exactly right, and, and, and that was our concern also, that there's ordinarily an undercount, but it may be an undercount of the undercount, and then that also plays into those federal numbers, those federal dollars that come in, and that could, that could exacerbate the challenges we have right now in finding, and funding, and providing resources for those who are unhoused and unsheltered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you very much, first, I do want to welcome the young ladies of AKA and their friends, and to tell you that I represent A and T's farm and gateway, so I am your representative there where we grow the food, very substantial part of A and T agricultural, so I can't leave that, Dr. Wells has the campus, but I have the farm, just so you know, so it's spread wide, but welcome, and certainly glad you're here to be civically engaged, you're the future, I met a young lady from A and T at the mat counter at Dillard's, and this is her senior year, and so she's in political science, so I think she's got a good future ahead of her, and I've invited her to come here as well, to see government in action, and hopefully I'll hear from Madison soon. I also want to share with you, as the GTA liaison in the transit system, that our numbers for the Crossmax Purple are steady, anywhere from 46,000, 49,000, to 32,000, so the rider interest is still there, and that is our crosstown route from east to west, we are not able to start our crosstown orange yet, I think our buses, we are needing some additional buses, we're waiting on them to come in, to haven't gotten here yet, but the Crossmax Orange is definitely our next north to south crosstown route. I will say that the hopper trolley, because I hear a lot of concerns about it, they don't see people on it, I will say it's heavier ridden in the summer months than it is in the winter months, and so for October, we only, November, we only saw about 800, and then in December, 400, nobody's coming out, it's too cold, but we expect it to pick back up, and we're only running that route on the weekends, which I think is really where you'll see more of your heavier ridership there. I also want to say that I was too at the Black and White Gala on Saturday night, celebrating 65 years of the sit-ins, where people sat down so we could stand up, it also was 15 years that the International Civil Rights Center and Museum has been open, it is now a national heritage. I also want to say congratulations to South Bimbo neighborhood with, for, on the now historic register, their neighborhood, there is a celebration on February 15th at one, at Providence, starting at Providence Baptist Church, from there, we will trek over to the History Museum, where we will have another presentation around how Bimbo became historic, and it's the first black neighborhood to have gotten this historic designation, and is right here in East Greensboro, where many A and T professors, architects, they lived in their houses, so when you ride in Madame Bimbo, slow down a little bit, when you see those beautiful brick houses, many of the professors from A and T lived there as well, doctors, lawyers, so it's really a great recognition for them, and we're very proud to have that. On yesterday, we celebrated the opening of the Faust Elementary Robotic and Gaming School, and it is truly fascinating, I wish I'd had time to put the robot on the screen for you to see, it was actually, he was like a little dog, but he moved around, back and forth, stood up, rolled over, quite fascinating, and the children were just awesome, so, and that is really STEM oriented, so they're learning science, technology, engine math, yes, it's not only just robotics and gaming, and it's highly scientific, and it's a brand-new school, Faust Elementary, off of Metabook, so congratulations to them as well, and I enjoyed celebrating with them. What I do want to say, Mr. Matheny, I understand your concern for John Demery, I've been here over 10 years, John Demery's been here longer than the 8th, John Demery's been sitting there for a long time, part of the issue, I think, is the creativity that people don't exhibit, I don't want us just to continue to have just a basic neighborhood, it deserves better, and so we are looking for something that's creative, unique, that will enhance our community and grow, and it is, that community is right off of the Bimbo area, so we want to ensure that what comes is the best we, you know, that there is, it deserves it, we are, as you know, in the east side of town, the last side of town to be developed, and to be focused on, and so we now don't want to just take anything, that's why Windsor Center is so important, $77 million project, why A and T's resurgent is important, we deserve, and it's our time for equitable treatment that we have not had in years, so I don't want John Demery just to be a rehab, throw some paint on it, and say, okay, that's it, if we can find a partner that really is thinking outside the box, I really would like for us to do that, so yeah, it's taking a minute, we're in the second RFPs, but we're, and we're asking people, think how you really want to see this community look, so that's why there's been a little delay with John Demery, and I'm just as concerned as you, even though it's not in my district, it's in Goldie's district, but it's in my community, and that's where we need to be focused on, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
But I did want to say that there is some progress being made as far as Regency and Demery, we met this week with the deputy city managers, and we talked about what we want, and so it had to be revamped, we had to go back and start over, but what Councilwoman Hightower said, we were looking for something creative, we want to upgrade the neighborhood, rather than just have cookie cutter that we've had before. Got to say, when it was my time to speak, that this is Black History Month, we began Black History Month, we know that every day of the year, black Americans make America what it is, but this is the month that's been set aside, so let's not forget that.
And finally, I just wanted to say, welcome Councilwoman Jamila Pender, to this awesome group of people that gonna be confused half the time, but it's all right. So, you'll find, but I look forward to doing things with you, and, and, yeah, don't worry, tonight we're kind of mild, I have feeling some excitement's gonna come soon, but welcome.
Mrs. Booze-Water, did you say you had an addition?
Yes, I think we've all thought of things while we're listening to things up here, and a few things we, we forgot to mention, most of us did go to the MLK Junior Breakfast and the Black and White Ball, I do want to commend Mrs. Hightower and staff, of course, the vending machine at Warner'sville is a vending machine where children earn tokens, they put the tokens in, and a book comes out that they can keep for themselves, and they get to select the book, so it's absolutely amazing, I put a little video on Facebook showing what it does, and the kids were so excited, it was, it was just, just everything, I tell you, so, and, and what I was really going to talk about was, thank you all for being here, if you're looking for a community organization to volunteer with, I'm the liaison, well, advisor to the A and T Circle K Club, so if you're looking for a, an organization that is in the community, a service organization, I'm going to give them a shameless plug, because, yeah, they, they, the last meeting, I was there, and they made non-sewable blankets for the homeless, so probably made about 30, 30 of those, so I was so So I was so impressed, and they're almost overflowing with members, but I know that they want to brag and be more overflowing. So Audra Nesbit is the young lady to contact, and I feel comfortable giving out her name because it's pretty public. So it's the Circle K Club. Thank you.
I just have one thing. In December, the International Civil Rights Center and Museum was notified by the National Park Service that the building had been designated a national historic landmark. And that is really a pretty huge designation. And that gets it one step further to that World Heritage UNESCO. Is it UNESCO or UNESCO? UNESCO, that UNESCO designation. And that would really be huge for the Civil Rights Museum and for this community. I was traveling this fall, and it is amazing how many people just go to those historic landmarks, and they're all over, they're all over the world. And people will come to the Civil Rights Museum if they get the UNESCO designation. It is a 10-year process. They are seven or eight years into that process. I was hoping they'd get it while I was still mayor, because I know it's going to be a really big deal. But as long as they get it, I don't care. But the Civil Rights Museum has done a great job preparing the paperwork and the case for having them get that World Heritage designation, and I really hope that they're able to get it. So, Ms... I think I... Mr. City Manager?
None tonight, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.